Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, on regular business.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howarlac?
I presume that means that we're not going to do the substantive resolution.
The resolution here is the third one on there. Did I do it incorrectly?
There wasn't...
Yes?
There was an active resolution on the table made by Mayor Schilling, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin. That is the motion that passed as initially stated.
Right. That was the original proposal. That's why I went that route. Next, request for closed session. Is it necessary? Councilmembers, do you wish to just... Okay, they're shaking their heads. Could we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
It resolves that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session. Troy v. Ida Rudak Trust, as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we'll meet in closed session for the item so indicated. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. I for City of Troy Investment Policy and Establishment of Investment Accounts. Do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Resolves that Troy City Council hereby approves the investment policy and establishment of investment accounts as outlined in the memorandum from Assistant City Manager Finance and Administration, John M. Lamorato, dated November 2, 2010, copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Madam Mayor? If I may, there was a yellow sheet that should be incorporated in this. It added an institution.
Would you call that to our attention, please?
It added ambassador funds? Was that...
Yes.
All right, yes. Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution with the addition of the fund that is so indicated on the yellow memo. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Howarlac?
I have had two questions submitted to me, and I had mentioned that I would pass it along. What is the... And I'm just... All I'm doing is I'm a conduit of a question from the two constituents. What is the possibility of including in the future, not necessarily in this particular resolution, credit unions?
Mr. Lamorato or Mr. Zerlai?
Mr. Lamorato can respond to this.
A question asked at me was asked by former Councilman Lambert, who worked for a credit union.
Mayor in City Council, I believe we did address this question several years ago regarding the credit unions. I just don't feel they have the financial back, the funds and so forth, the capital and everything that to invest city funds. And at this point, and the institutions we have here are all major institutions. And I would not feel comfortable myself putting any large sums of money with those with the credit unions.
Thank you. Further discussion of the item? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Consent agenda. Council, do you have any items you want removed from consideration?
Mayor?
Who is that? Oh, Councilman Howarlac?
I would request item J4E and J... Hang on. Two.
J2 and J4E?
Yes, please.
Okay. Could we have a resolution approving all the other items except for the two indicated?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Resolves that the Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items J2 and J4E, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution of all items on the consent agenda item except J2 and J4E. That will be considered after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilman Howarlac, you asked for J2 and then J4E?
Mayor? I would... The only minutes that I wanted to bring up were the November 1, 2010, City Council's special meeting. And there's a line here under C where it says, "Mayor Schilling adjourned the meeting immediately after opening the item for discussion." The... It wasn't quite immediately because there was a probably, I would say, maybe three minutes of discussion on the City Council about... Because I remember you had outlined a proposal for a one and a half hour-long meeting, and I had asked, I think, one or two questions. And so I didn't... If we could just change immediately to shortly after, I would be content.
Let me with Council's...
Yes.
Recollection?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So with that, would you move the approval of minutes?
Yes, I will, Mayor. I will move to approve, I think there are minutes for the regular City Council meeting on October 18th, the minutes of the special City Council meeting on October 28, 2010, and the minutes as mentioned, as corrected here at the council table for the special council meeting on November 1, 2010.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Howarlac, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as indicated. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yeah.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Howarlac, you asked for J4E, which is the low bidder on the wind turbine systems. Just to follow up with a question at the... In the public comments, someone mentioned it also.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to... Two things. I wanted to clarify that this is not city money. I want to make that... I just... I can say it, but if Senator for Management can also back that up, I'd appreciate it.
Mark Miller will be happy to respond to all questions pertaining to this item.
Madam Mayor, this is not city dollars. It is part of the EECBG grant, which is federal dollars.
And the concern of the resident was what happens after the three years? Who pays for the things then?
We would have to make a decision whether we would continue with this maintenance contract. But part of what this purpose of this grant is that we would... The grant gives us the ability to look at these wind spheres and analyze them and whether they have usefulness or not. And we can make a decision whether to continue them or...
And if we...
And if we could decide not to, that's not... It's not mandatory that we continue that maintenance contract after the fact.
So then, if we decide not to, then it's a matter as far as the numbers that are there?
Correct. Part of the purpose of this, it's to get data on how well these perform. We're proposing that this will provide lighting for the Veterans Memorial, energy for that located in front of City Hall. And that is the purpose of this grant, is for us to have the ability to purchase, you know, alternative energy sources and analyze whether or not they're useful.
Yes. We went over this in a study session, but the resident that came in and spoke is not present now. So maybe she'll watch and get the information. Councilman Howarlac, are you... Did you have anything more on the wind turbine?
No. You know, I want... I'm still a skeptic on it, I will tell you. And so I'll be voting against it. But I wanted to be clear that it's not because I'm voting against it because it's city money, and I don't think the city should be spending money this way. I'm voting against it because it's a poor expenditure. It's still tax money. And I wouldn't even want my relative to spend their money this way. So that's my opinion. I'm skeptical. I think that we, you know, we've had, or at least what I've read on these, particularly as it relates to a city like Troy, where we are not in a... What one might refer to as a wind tunnel, like they have in the thumb, and in certain areas of the west central U.S. So I can't support it, but I just wanted to at least have the opportunity for management to make sure that everyone knew that this is federal grant money that is being... Basically, it's passing through to the city, and we're simply awarding this.
Further discussion? Then could we have a resolution to approve this item? Any council member?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move to approve the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion further? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howarlac?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. We move to memorandums and council referrals. Councilman Fleming, you have an item for referral on here?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to amend that from what is printed here slightly. And the resolution is resolved that the Troy City Council hereby scheduled a special meeting on, and I'm going to put a date, November 22, which combines with another meeting. In the Council Boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of revising the 2011 budget and future year's budget priorities. Period.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as...
Mayor?
Read and with the date of November... Yes?
I need a time inserted.
Okay. Can we have some discussion on that, the time? Because we have a regular scheduled meeting that night. So it would be following the regular scheduled meeting.
Following the regular meeting? Okay. You want to add that to the...
Yes.
Resolution?
Add that to the resolution.
Discussion of the resolution?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Fleming?
I'd originally written this budget, and it read with the goal of providing funding for the library. But I don't want to limit it to the library. I want to open the budget up again, look at the budget process. It would include the library, but there may be some other priorities as well. Because I think there's a lot of discussion here tonight, and I don't want to do a budget around the library. I think we need to look at all of our priorities again. So I'm rethinking that process. I have no political agenda with this. Simply, I want to open the budget up, look at it again. We said we were going to be doing this as a rolling budget anyway, but I want to look at the future year's budget with looking at the priorities again, the way we structure the budget.
You know, when we set our meeting dates, the last meeting, we built in several meetings where we're going to talk about the budgets. And they were quarterly meetings. The other thing is, in doing it on November 22, that is looking at items before we have our ICMA report in, which is going to give us valuable information to determine things. So that is asserting their work that they're doing before they do the work, in my mind. I don't know how others feel about that.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I agree, actually, with that same statement. And I had seen that this is on here, and obviously, following the results of the election and seeing everyone that was here tonight, the discussions are not over. I don't think that anyone intended that they would be over. We did a three-year budget based on what we knew when we made the budget. Obviously, we've made decisions since then that have gone towards cutting staff and cutting departments. And I think that we're going to be getting more information on the resulting departments that we have left, and many of them being the bigger departments in the city, that I think that it would be kind of spinning our wheels to set aside that time without having that information in front of us. I know that I'm very well-prepared, and I was anticipating that we would have continuing discussions about the budget. But it just seems to be like we're putting the cart before the horse until we've got those recommendations and make some decisions where we can finally sit together at the table and say, "We've really gone through each department. We've made some recommendations. We've made some decisions." And that we feel we've done a complete job of doing that. I just don't think it would be fair to give the citizens some sort of impression that we're in a position to make decisions about reprioritizing or changing anything that we've already made a decision on. It just seems like the 22nd, we're not going to have any additional information that would help us make that. And I am hopeful that we will have additional information within the next couple of months. So I'm not sure what the motivation for doing it on the 22nd would be, other than to make the citizens feel better because they're really angry right now, or they're upset, or they're concerned about the library issue. I just think that it's too soon to do that. I think we need to wait until we've got all of the information that we're going to have before we start having those discussions or making changes.
Councilwoman Slater?
Yeah. I couldn't agree more. I think it's premature. I would like to tell citizens that I agree with this. I just don't agree with the timing. And for another reason. We gave direction to the administration for contract negotiations. I think we need to wait until we get all of that data back, as well as the information from the ICMA, before we sit down. I think it's premature at this point, but I would certainly like to tell everybody that we are going to do this at some point. But I think that's not the time that we should do it.
Further discussion of the motion? Councilwoman Beltramini?
I understand and don't fully disagree with any of those points. However, having sat at this table, and although I've had some assurances that this year will be different, I am still somewhat skeptical that members of this council are willing to consider amending the priorities without a resolution. So that's the first point. And the second one is, ICMA has not guaranteed us a report until the end of January. Mr. Lamorato sends out his "Give me your budget" recommendations to the departments in December. So right now, those recommendations will go out absolutely on the existing three-year plan. And if that's what you want to do, just tell the people that now, and we'll close this discussion. If you feel like you might be willing to amend the priorities, you need to tell them you're willing to have that discussion. And you need to tell them that so that Lamorato can do his job sooner rather than later. And the finals on all of that can be done after ICMA comes in. But right now, the signal that this council as a body has sent to the people of Troy is, "The library closes the 30th of June, and we're done talking about it." That is the signal.
The... Does anybody else want to talk? Because I know we have our rule about not talking a second time until everybody's had a chance. So anybody else want to say anything before I jump in again?
Go ahead.
No, I had a turn already, so I'm looking for people who have not spoken. You spoke, I spoke. Councilman Howarlac, did you speak on it yet?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I think Councilwoman Beltramini has a good point. And I think also that because of the situation that we're in, it's something that should really be continuous. And I think it is going to take some time. And I know a lot of our study sessions, unfortunately, end up being more of a presentation with a minimal amount of work actually getting done. And so I think if we do have more opportunities to discuss this multi-year budget, then we'll actually be able to accomplish something. My concern is that, you know, we wait until the ICMA study comes back, and then there's a time issue, and then there's also the next budget cycle that we're running into as well. So I would certainly speak in favor of the resolution on the table.
Anyone that has not spoken want to speak on it? Councilwoman Kerrwin?
Well, a couple things in response. One, I think it's really important that we look at revenues and expenditures. And I do agree that I think we gave a signal. I know that the manager has been working with our bargaining units. That will give us an idea of dollars. I think we have to work from a fact base and not from a wish base. We understand what it takes to have a full-service library. We know the real numbers. We know what we've done for the past year has been a real stretch. And I'm in there four days a week, so I can see firsthand. It's not what the citizens who came and spoke so passionately about wanting to have a Saturday open and being available more and having the programs back and so on. So looking at that entire package actually takes reverence. So I think it's important to be realistic and have an agreement about those facts as we go forward. As I say, if someone can pick up the budget and find the $12 million going forward, then I think that that's an important thing. But cutting our way to a full-service library is Mount Everest. And what we were told today, and as I say, you'll receive copies of, and I hope you look at every single thing that came out of the county executives, there are some serious numbers that are going to impact even the projections we have on our rolling budget. I think it is important that we get back and look at our rolling budget to ascertain that. However, we do know that a third of the top-tier jobs are gone, and that impacts this community specifically in terms of our industrial base. We've seen that change. There is information about businesses in general and some specifically. And there's telling information about the 43% of all revenues for the state of Michigan, which are coming from federal dollars that are changing significantly. We have seen billions of dollars since 2001 cut from revenue sharing in this state. Councilmember Beltramini speaks about that quite frequently, and we do not anticipate, under the next administration, receiving those revenue dollars. So we're going to have to look carefully at what we've even planned for for the next two years in terms of sustainability. When Councilmember Beltramini speaks of this council in general, when I joined in 2007 and we first received from then our manager, Phil, the white paper which spoke specifically about revenues and expenditures, he laid out what would happen if this was not grappled with. And there has been a fiddly-de attitude on council that, "Well, we can keep doing it and lower taxes, and we'll just keep on going and going and going." And people have pointed out, things have changed dramatically. Our tax base has significantly changed, and with a 54% drop, we will not be seeing the revenue that we anticipated even a year ago. So let's be realistic, and let's get the real numbers down there and have real conversations when we can, look at some of those things. And not with preconceived, but with an understanding that we agree that public safety and the ability to drive on our streets to and from work is essential. And those things are the core services, and that's still what the budget's designed around.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yeah. I'm just trying to create a sense of urgency here. I don't want to wait until next year, end of January, 1st of February, to start the discussions. I think that'll be too late. I know it's an ongoing process. It's a rolling budget process, as I see it. It's not going to be easy. I'm not proposing that we're going to have a library the way we've known it in the past. I'm trying to salvage something for the library and maybe some other services as well. I don't want to end with just the library. But that is a big portion of it. But I expect that the library will be downsized. I expect we'll be going to the state and asking to keep the library open for fewer hours. I suspect we might be moving some things from the library services that we're currently offering, now won't be offering in the future. But you know, a lot of that's going to come from the library people themselves. I don't sit here and propose, as a councilperson, to know all the aspects of the library. There are people much more qualified than I am, and I'm sure they can offer some suggestions. They may not be suggestions that they prefer, but they might be something that we can live with. But there are some options. But I don't suppose it will propose that we'd have a library the way we've had in the past. But I'm trying to salvage something, and I think we can. It's going to be hard work. But I don't want to wait until February to start this discussion. I think it's too late. We need to be looking at the big picture now.
My concern with doing it too soon is that biggest portion of our budget is the police department. One of the things in the ICMA report, and they gave us charts, graphs, all kinds of things, and they even have the specialized people that look at that, are going to give us information. If we're going to look for large amount of dollars, sustainable, year after year after year, $4 million, whatever, with our declining revenue stream, residential going down 10 and 1/2%, and commercial, industrial going down 20% in the next year, and then continuing to decline till 2014, and gradually going back up until 2028, when it'll get back to 2008 levels, I don't want us to start cutting, looking at things here and there. We've been down that road before without having information to base that on. So I'm not in favor of the November 22 date. Councilwoman McGinnis, I saw you signal.
I guess, and just to follow up, I just want to know what... Where the new information is coming from? Because I know you said create a sense of urgency. I kind of felt like there was a sense of urgency when we were going through the budgeting sessions. The information is the same. It's probably worse, actually, I think, in terms of projected revenue. So if we want to reopen up the can of worms right now, where we're not complete going through each department, where we can't say, "Yes, absolutely, we've gone through police, public works, and this is what we can feasibly do. This is what it will feasibly cost." I'm just not sure why we're opening up the can of worms now, unless we want worse news than we were dealing with in April and May. I think it's unfair to say that we need to create a sense of urgency, because I was sitting here in April and May through all of those meetings, and it wasn't just a decision to get rid of the library, to save us money by getting rid of the library. It was a comprehensive approach to how we were going to look at every department, how we were going to restructure, and what our priorities would be if we're faced with the decision that we have to go to bare bones, or we're not going to be able to have everything that we've been accustomed to having. So I'm absolutely in favor of revisiting this. I was just telling the city manager the other day, I want updates. I want updates. I want to know where we're at. I want to see the big picture. And sometimes, when I come to meetings, I feel like I don't have it yet because we don't have all that information. So I feel like I would be doing the council and city staff and the citizens a disservice to sit down and have that conversation when we don't have all that information. And I don't think that by saying we're not doing it on the 22nd... We have to have budget discussions again. We have to go through and approve the budget for next year during the same time. Just because we came up with a three-year budget doesn't mean that we're never going to have a discussion from here until the end of the three-year period. But I just feel like I know that there's an intense amount of pressure right now to keep that conversation going, ongoing about the library. Every day, there are people that want to talk about the library, and I totally understand that. But I just think that at this point, we would be doing ourselves a disservice. It's going to pit a group of us against another group of us, looking like some people are pro-library or anti-library. And I think that the fact of the matter is, even though it gets lost in the shuffle sometimes, we're all sitting up here. We're all residents of the city. I think almost all of us are homeowners in the city. We work in the city. We don't want to trash the city by getting rid of the library We don't want to trash the city by getting rid of the library and shooting ourselves in the foot. The decisions that we're making, hopefully, we're each making in the best interest of the city and the people we think we're representing. And I don't want to put ourselves in this position where we're making decisions without all the information yet, and I think that's what's going to happen if we do this on the 22nd.
Further discussion on the resolution?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yeah, I ditto on that, but more importantly for me, because I've seen this happen before, where council sometimes, by having a study session, will negatively impact contract negotiations by discussing potential layoffs or moving money from one area to another, where the employee, I think the employee right now feels somewhat secure with some of the decisions that have been made. Now, if you, while these negotiations are going on, if you start changing everything and maybe talking about potential layoffs in other areas, it's just going to be negative towards anything that John's trying to do. So I think we just have to calm down here. I think we all want to try and do what's best, is to do what you're trying to do, but I think we need to just slow down and do it right. And doing it right is not -- if we have it next week, or whenever the 22nd, you want another reality check, you know? Is that what we want? No, that's not what we want. We don't want to tell them that it's impossible to have the library. Let's wait until we have our study. It only makes sense to wait and get -- hopefully, we're going to be able to tweak this. That's my goal, but I think we need some patience here, and we don't need to jump at it. Let's wait for the study to come back. Let's give the administration an opportunity to continue to negotiate with the associations and the unions. Let's not negatively impact that. To me, that's important. So I think if we wait till the first of the year, we can still accomplish what you want to accomplish. If you want to put that date down here, I'll support you. If it's a must-have resolution, and you want to put that date down there, I'll support you on that. But I can't support November 22nd.
Further discussion on the motion? Yes, I don't know who signaled first.
It doesn't matter.
Because I'm trying to watch and hear and everything at once, so, yes. I appreciate when Councilwoman Hauerlag says "Mayor," because then I can hear him and see him at the same time. Thank you. Councilwoman Beltramini?
I noticed that when I said the end of January, a couple of people on management jumped. What is the current date?
For every element or department, with the exception of the police department, I expect that ICMA will have a report in writing to the city council within the first 10 days of January, and then I'd like to schedule a, based on your schedule, of course, and theirs, because they're all coming out of different places of the United States, maybe a three- or four-hour meeting, you know, once council has reviewed the work, to have them, again, walk through it sometime before January 17th.
The reason I ask is, Dane probably just now gave the best reason I've heard to not rush this, and he tagged on to the end of that, that he does want to open the conversation. And I said, council speaks through its resolutions, and without a resolution that says that we're willing to revisit those priorities, what was done in May stands. And I didn't buy in in May, and I'm not buying in now. So that's kind of where I am. I'm willing to rethink it, and you may get my vote instead of the other way around. But I do want a resolution that absolutely says we're going to do this. So if it has to be after the 20th of January or whatever, that's -- I can live with it, but we've got to have a date certain.
Now, Mike, I have another question, because after Mr. Zerlak's answer, we're getting that all the other departments, and when are we getting the police information?
You know, I, the police element, those folks are working directly with chief mayor. I'm not sure if they've given the chief a date. I'm not sure if Gary's in the audience. Oh, there he is.
He is. Been here all night.
Thank you.
Yes?
They have not given me a date. We started providing data a couple weeks ago, and we're meeting with some of the evaluators Thursday.
Okay.
They haven't given me a date that we can do. I can ascertain that, I can email them.
Could you?
Information tomorrow, Mr. Zerlak.
Okay. Could we ask them for a date? Because, again, I reiterate, that's largest part of our budget.
Understood. The contract has a date, and I forgot what that date is. I thought it was sometime late in February, but I could be mistaken. But I think now that they've actually been here, ICMA has, they may be able to give us a better calibrated number, a little more accurate number.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Fleming?
I'd be willing to amend the date if we could come up with a date, that we can live with that, you know? But right now, I don't think I'm going to get the support for November the 22nd. So I'm looking for a date that management feels, but with some sense of urgency that we can live with.
This is up to you, is totally, and just a suggestion, but you may want to have this conversation in tandem with the ICMA presentation. You'll already have the recommendations in hard copy. They'll be coming in to explain it to the council and the community. Maybe afterward, you can have this discussion.
I think that's too much in one meeting, but I, up to council, if they, I don't know what else we're, I mean, is it, is this a special meeting? And they want to meet with us three or four hours, and then we're going to talk about the budget for three more hours?
Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Slater?
Maybe we could have it in tandem with that meeting as a starting point, because we're not going to be able to do this in one study session, but maybe we could get going for an hour or so, and then schedule something after that. Set that date, and I'll support you.
What is, Madam?
Yes, Councilman Fleming?
What is that date certain? Did I hear January 17th? Or is that a date certain for ICMA?
I think it's the week of January 17th, or even a few days before. What I'll do is firm up the date where Mr. Rapp and his colleagues can actually come physically to the city of Troy, and then, well, I'll have them give me a couple dates, and then have council pick one of those dates. Preferably, from my view, you'd want to meet on that topic without a council meeting that has regular business attached thereto. It should be a special meeting. And if you met even earlier, at 6:00 p.m., you might want to go till 10 o'clock on that night. And we'd have a date, you know, it may not be on a Monday, maybe it'll be on a Tuesday or Wednesday.
With a resolution, do we have to have a date certain for this resolution?
It has to be either a date certain or an action.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Zerlak?
I can bring a date back. I'll talk to the folks at ICMA tomorrow, and we'll fall on a couple of dates. I can bring that back as an agenda item. Not so much with the police element, but with all the other elements, I can do that.
So we can deal with it at the next meeting if we?
With everything with the police department, yes.
Postpone this and give us more time to think about it as well.
And then maybe by then, we'll also have a date when police department said that we can set two.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
If I may, is your preference to do this at a special meeting, as opposed to in addition to a council meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be preferable to me.
Are weekends off the table, or?
Whenever.
I'll have them give us a series of dates.
Okay.
So we'll postpone this, who to postpone this to the next meeting?
Yes. We'll have more information. Councilwoman Kirwin, did you want to speak? Okay. All right, so do we need a resolution to postpone? Councilwoman Fleming, you want to?
Yes. I move a resolution to postpone this agenda item, this meeting, until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is the 15th of November.
Is that? Councilwoman Beltramini?
No, it was me.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Sorry.
Years are going here, at 11 o'clock. Okay, moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we postpone this item until the regular meeting of November 15th. Discussion? The vote on the postponement?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Hauerlag?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item up is council comments. Anybody have council comments they want to bring forward?
Just have one.
You're going to read that report to us?
I am. I just want to give the website.
They're pretending, Kirwin, I'll get it out yet?
That for our home viewers who would like to see the Oakland County Executive's Budget Symposium, this is the second one that they've offered. They had a number of very good PowerPoints made available to a lot of units of government. Certainly, multi-year budgeting, we've talked about, but sustainability, doing more with less, property tax values and so on. If you go to the county website, oakgov.com, and then the County Executives button, you should be able to see Budget Symposium 2, and then go all the way to the bottom of the page, and you'll see the four different buttons for some of the PowerPoints. But I certainly do thank the county executive and his team for presenting this information today, and I do urge all council members to read it in preparation for our next meeting.
Are we getting it hard copy?
No, you are not. It's a green world now.
It's what?
Green world. Go green.
Yeah.
From the website.
How thick is that thing? How can you read it? How many pages is that, Mary?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I would like to remind people that we'll be observing Veterans Day
Yes.
On Thursday, here in front of City Hall at the Veterans Plaza, to give thanks for those who have contributed to securing our freedom.
What time?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
11th hour, 11th day, 11th month. If there are no other items to come before us, we'll stand in recess while we have our exec session in the other room.